Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna go ahead and call to order the meeting of the City of Bloomington Council. If everyone could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence. Thank you. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Kearns?
Here.
Councilmember Montney?
Here.
Councilmember Danenberger?
Here.
Councilmember Becker?
Here.
Councilmember Hendricks?
Here.
Councilmember Ward?
Here.
Councilmember Krempler?
Here.
Mayor Milliwan-Bay?
Here. We do not have any recognitions or appointments, so we're gonna go...
Excuse me, here. Sorry to interrupt you. We do have Councilmember Bolan, I believe, online, who would like to attend remotely due to illness.
Sorry. I'm trying to speed things up here, sorry. Yes, so we are going to ask for a motion and a second to allow Councilmember Bolan to attend remotely due to illness.
I'll move she be allowed to attend remotely.
Okay. Councilmember Montney, second by Councilmember Kearns.
All right, now I'll call it real quick. Councilmember Kearns?
Yes.
Councilmember Montney?
Yes.
Councilmember Danenberger?
Yes.
Councilmember Becker?
Yes.
Councilmember Hendricks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward? Councilmember Krempler?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Bolan, are you there?
I'm here, thank you very much.
It's a little faint. Can you say something?
Yes, thank you, I'm here.
Okay, thank you, much better. Now, we're gonna move on to a public comment.
Yes, we do have several people to speak, I believe six, and we will start with, let's see here, Elaine Reimheimer, and then to follow Sarah Lindenbaum, after you read your statement.
Okay. Public comment is an opportunity for speakers to provide their views and feedback to the city council. It's also an opportunity for the city council to listen and hear diverse points of view to maximize the impact of public comment and show respect for the expression of all views. Speakers must maintain, should maintain civility and focus on city issues. Speakers must identify themselves for the record but are not required to give their address. Each speaker is given the floor for three minutes and the council does not respond or engage in debate. Any speaker that engages in threatening or disorderly behavior will be deemed out of order and their time ceased. Go ahead.
Hi, I am Elaine Reimheimer. I'm a thirty-year member of Holy Trinity Parish. I stand in opposition of the petition of the Historic Preservation Commission for an S4 zoning overlay for Holy Trinity Church. I call your attention to the letter written by Monsignor Gray, which I believe you received by email. He can't be here today because he's at a legal conference in Albuquerque. First, I'm gonna draw your attention to the potential overreach of the Historic Preservation Commission. The powers they have under the city code should terrify any landowner in Bloomington. The S4 overlay gives control over many decisions about the church building. They would be empowered to make decisions that would cost, could cost the parish hundreds of thousands of dollars. Second, Monsignor Gray attached an article about a church in the Pilsen neighborhood in Chicago. It states that the city of Chicago is not allowed by code to impose historic status on any active church building. That story, in that story, the alderman of Chicago delayed the historic designation because they recognized that they could impose additional costs on the church. A city official also stated that imposing historic status against the wishes of the landowner is an injustice to the people who own a piece of property. The city of Chicago is cautious in imposing historic designation, and I would recommend that approach to the city council of Bloomington as well. Third, the Diocese of Peoria believes that the Religious Freedom Restoration Act applies in this case. We believe it's not in the best interest of the city council or the city of Bloomington to get into a legal dispute with the diocese. We'd like you to know that the parishioners of Holy Trinity are strongly motivated to raise the funds needed to repair the buildings, the parish buildings, and the S4 overlay is not only not needed, but it, on the contrary, its designation is detrimental to the church. Thank you.
Thank you, next.
All right, next up, we'll have Sarah Lindenbaum, and then to follow Serena Fish.
Sarah?
All right, we will jump to Serena Fish. And to follow, we'll have Lucille Eckert.
Good evening, Serena Fish. I'm a member of West Side Neighbors, the Election Board, and Police Review Board, PSCRB. I'm just reiterating what the lady just said. People in our area are totally against it too, based on past history with church and state should not be combined. And the church has... My time. Because he'll get me.
Twenty seconds.
Huh? Back it up. So I'm just reiterating, and people in our local area. Another thing is, I know there's other people talking about the tent city tonight. There are still quite a few people on the property, and it's cold. And not everything is in line yet for them to move, so I'd like for you to listen to one of the other presenters tonight and considering possibly giving them another week to move. But move, thank you. The last thing is coming up, oh, there's a thing, an article about in the downtown revitalization, an idea floating by one of the council people about parking meters. People, don't give people another idea about a reason not to come downtown because they have to pay to park there. Last is, next Wednesday, I think it is, the county board is voting case number SP-07-24 on a petition by lifelong access representing the owner for a special use permit for a school in the D2 Downtown Traditional District for property located at 301 West Washington Street. In case none of you know, that's the Panograph Building. And the school they want to put in there is the alternative school, which is people that are delinquent or for whatever reason have been put out of regular school. We have people that come into our store and they have ankle bracelets on. So again, another reason not to okay something because you're inviting another set of people who already have problems down, which downtown now is starting to turn the corner. Please say no if it comes to you, thank you.
Thank you, next.
All right, next up, we have Lucille Eckert, and then to follow will be Ed Rosier.
Hi, my name is Lucille Eckrich. I live on the east side in Founder's Grove, and some of you may recognize me as I observe city council meetings monthly for the League of Women Voters, as I will do the rest of tonight, but I am not making public comments in that capacity. Rather, I do so as a local citizen since 2001, as a parishioner at Holy Trinity since 2002, as a person married to a German cabinetmaker, and as the mother of a twenty-six-year-old architect who grew up in Bloomington since he was three years old, went to District 87 schools, and attended and was confirmed at Holy Trinity Church. I stand to ask you to vote to pass the ordinance approving the Planning Commission's recommendation that Holy Trinity and church and rectory be designated as local landmarks and that the Historic Preservation District overlay be added to that property. I do so for personal, spiritual, historic, aesthetic, cultural, and civic reasons, but quite simply because I think Holy Trinity Church is not only the most beautiful architectural building and church in our Twin Cities, but the most beautiful church that I've been in within the United States. I had been in ones like it only in Europe, including the one-thousand-year-old cathedral-inspired Germany, the town next to where my spouse grew up. It took over a hundred years to build that church, and Holy Trinity is its sister cathedral in my view. I and fellow parishioners witnessed and lived through the possibility over the past year-plus that Holy Trinity Church would be closed by the diocese as a Catholic church. While that would have been dismayed and deeply altered my own worship experience, I still would have believed, as I do today, that the church should be designated and preserved as a historical cultural landmark and then used for, if the church, the diocese would decide to sell it, used for not-for-profit ecumenical purposes of religious and musical organizations and people throughout our Twin Cities. I know there are costs to the congregation and diocese that come along with this designation, and since my spouse and I tithe weekly, some of it will fall on us. We will bear our fair share, but there are also many benefits that can come with it, not only for parishioners and the diocese, but also for the residents of Bloomington Normal, McLean County, and those who visit here from outside. It would be a travesty if this beautiful and historic building of worship, music, prayer, and fellowship were ever dismantled or used for commercial purposes. That is why I recommend you approve the historic preservation designation and overlay. I was going to end with a nice story, but I see my time is out, so I will just say that story. When we looked around at the Catholic churches in town for quite a while before we settled on Holy Trinity, my son was four-year-old, sitting in the church for a 7:00 PM service with candlelights on. He said, "I think we should make this our church."
Thank you.
That person is now a twenty-six-year-old architect. I won't spare you what he's helping to build,
Thank you.
but I think he knows a nice building when he sees one, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have Ed Rosier, and then to follow will be Dick Taylor.
Hello, my name is Ed Rosier. I'm not a person for words, but I built my house in 1980 on Livingston Street. And since nineteen, before 1998, I've dealt with my neighbor's tree, which is walnuts like this. It's run my roof three times, I replaced it. I talked to the city, talked to a maintenance company, talked to everybody. No one said they can't do nothing about it, such and such. I spent thousands of dollars removing this tree. Girl says she's not gonna remove it, she's not gonna cut it down, she knows what damage it is doing. So I don't know where to go from there. I talked to the city, a lady by the name of Linda. She finally came to the rescue, helped me out, and they refused to cut it all the way up to the top, and they said they're not gonna do it. I got pictures, I got videos, and it continues to leak down on my roof. At nighttime, it sound like a brick falling, during the daytime, all day long. I don't know what else to do from there.
Evening, name's Dick Taylor, I'm a friend of Ed's. I can say that he's gone through a lot, he's outside of being a good neighbor, trying to resolve things. I just happen to, you know, be there and listen to him and try to guide him and steer him in the right direction. That's why we came down here. Hopefully, none of you will have that problem with the neighbor's tree or trees dropping walnuts. And those walnuts, if you're up thirty feet high, and if it comes down, you're gonna hear it. And then it damages roof and everything. So, like I said, I'm in support of Ed, just trying to keep him on the right track, do the right thing. And that's all I have to say, I'm just a friend of his, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Mark Blodel, and then Zach Gettricks.
Hello, I'm Mark Blodel, and I'm not here in any capacity, I'm just the guy. I'm gonna speak quickly, I'm not speaking of motorized wheelchairs. They have to, allowances have to be made for motorized wheelchairs. But we have motorized scooters, motorized bicycles, and regular bicycles. I've got some padding, I'm seventy-three as of yesterday, but I've got some padding, but if one of them hits me, or if one of them hits you coming out of a store, you're going to be injured. My daughter, who is thirty-four, is five foot two, just like my mother was. So she's really gonna be injured if one of these vehicles comes down a sidewalk and hits them. And then I have a five-year-old grandson and a two-year-old, a three-year-old granddaughter. And if one of them comes out of a storefront and it hits them, they're really gonna be hurt. And yet, every day, when I'm downtown, these scooters and bicycles are going up and down the sidewalks constantly. So my comment about that is, if there isn't ordinance, it should be enforced just like speeding or anything else, another traffic offense, people should be given tickets. If you don't have an ordinance, you should pass the ordinance and then insist that your police issue the tickets, just like they would for speeding or illegal left turn or anything else, because this is very dangerous, and it's simply a question of, when are you gonna do it? And how many people have to be injured, how many children have to be injured before that happens? The second thing I would like to comment on is I think that police should give an increased presence at anything that happens in the square, especially Farmer's Market, but of course Farmer's Market is gonna run out shortly. But I think they should be there, and this is something that's a sensitive question perhaps, but if I were to come up and cause trouble, as you know, we were warned, right now, I'd have to be kicked out and everything, but you wouldn't give me a break if I was homeless. Now, I got my hair cut at The Great Clips up by Walmart in Normal, and the lady who cut my hair was homeless at one time, but she made a better person of herself. And then there are the homeless who drink and use drugs, and they come down to the square and they cause trouble. And I would say that just as any of you would like a policeman to be there and help you out in such a case so you wouldn't have to do it yourself, I would recommend that you make sure that the police have a presence there at all of the things that happen in the square, because it won't just be Farmer's Market. And that you ask them to see to it that people who are drinking and drugs and all that stuff and are being obnoxious to other people in the square don't get a break just because they're homeless, okay? You treat them as they would treat me or anybody else or one of yourself. That's it, I'm done. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Thank you, we'll have Zach Gettrick, and then lastly, Sarah Lindenbaum, who was registered as present.
Zach Gettrick, Vegetation Rising News. This is a press release that I got from the Salvation Army just today. The Salvation Army is diligently working to prepare our safe harbor emergency winter shelter, which will provide a haven for unhoused individuals transitioning from the encampment in Bloomington. We hoped to open the doors to the emergency shelter on October fifteenth, so long as the essential supplies were available for purchase and delivery and labor for facility updates could be completed quickly. The official opening of the emergency shelter is pending the professional installation of fire safety equipment, which is scheduled for this week, and the delivery of cots, which the supplier expects to ship soon. We are currently conducting interviews for the additional staffing in the shelter, so they're not completely ready. In the interim, until the emergency winter shelter opens, we are taking immediate action to support individuals at the encampment through alternative programs and resources. Our safety net will open on October fifteenth to provide unhoused individuals with safe space, blankets, and hydration from 10:00 PM to 5:30 AM. Additionally, individuals will have access to Salvation Army's day services, which include meals from 8:00 AM to 7:30 PM. We are also working to identify additional beds and temporary housing openings. Salvation Army staff has visited the encampment and will continue to do so to update residents and provide individual support that meets their needs. We continue coordinating with our community partners at the City of Bloomington and Home Sweet Home Ministries and look forward to opening doors to the emergency winter shelter very soon. That's the end of their statement. The encampment residents received a letter yesterday. The encampment is expected to be shut down tomorrow at 11:00 AM. Any property not removed will be taken down by force at 11:30 AM. As of yesterday, there's approximately fifty people currently living in the encampment. And from what I've heard, there's around a hundred and thirty unhoused people on the streets throughout the Twin Cities. God's Mission Ministry is a nonprofit that works directly with Blono's unhoused community, specifically the people that are not covered by the shelters, or they're ineligible for whatever reason. Anecdotally, from the person that I talked to at God's Mission Ministry, they have not heard anyone at the encampment say that they've spoken to the Salvation Army or have a plan to move there. Many are planning on moving into the woods, which is more dangerous and more isolated from the services they need. God's Mission Ministry is seeking donations. They plan on helping people in the encampment move to new locations, including if it's in the woods. Thank you.
All right, last up, we'll have Sarah Lindenbaum. And then just for the record, I wanted to note, it was mentioned earlier, but there was an email that was provided to council from Monsignor Jason Gray earlier today.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sarah Lindenbaum, and I'm the current chair of the Historic Preservation Commission, and I will try to keep this under three minutes. So I am here, obviously, to reiterate the HPC Commission's support of an S4 zoning overlay on Holy Trinity Catholic Church and Rectory. You should already be familiar with those findings. And I also just wanted to remind council members that the Planning Commission passed a resolution on September fourth this year finding that the structures met the criteria to be classified as local historic landmarks, and the proposed zoning map amendment to apply the S4 zoning historically was in the public interest and not solely for the benefit of the applicant. I also wish to remind the council members that the fight to save Holy Trinity Church and Rectory was brought to the HPC last year by members of the Holy Trinity Parish, who were concerned that the buildings were going to be demolished. The conversation was therefore initiated by citizens of the community, and we listened to them and performed our analysis accordingly. Monsignor Gray of the Peoria Diocese has expressed concern about the restrictions imposed by the S4 designation, and I just want to make sure you understand those restrictions are neither meaningless nor onerous. Should the resolution tonight pass, the red tape that the diocese fears is no more burdensome than the building and demolition permits any building owner must get in the city of Bloomington. I'm an S4 historic property owner myself. It's easy to get a certificate of appropriateness, and all it does is ensure that the materials, methods, and contractors used in any repairs align with recognized preservation standards. And as I noticed, noted in a previous letter to members, this ensures that any exterior restoration work has maximal longevity, which saves money for the property owners and Bloomington taxpayers. If the church decides to demolish either structure in the future, the designation also allows for input from the parishioners and the community before an irreparable decision is made. I also want to encourage you not to be frightened by the finding of one single architectural firm and that the, which has found that the repairs are quite expensive, but not all of their repairs proposed by the firm, sorry, tongue-tied, are time-sensitive, and not all, like code recommendations, apply to a structure, structures of this age. Additionally, the diocese may apply for up to $15,000 per year in grant funding from the city to help cover the costs of eligible exterior repairs. S4 zoning is a commitment to Bloomington's historic heritage in a partnership, not a punishment. While the HPC certainly wants a property owner to enthusiastically support zoning, there's precedent for applying the zoning amendment without full buy-in from the property owner. When the Franklin Square District was created, one property owner opposed the measure, but the city voted to keep the property in, it was decided that the public interest was greater. I want to bring in one final point from Landmarks Illinois, which works to preserve and reuse vulnerable historic buildings before they're gone forever. They say, "Local landmarking is appropriate when a building meets the required criteria of a local preservation ordinance." Who among us would not want to go back in time to save irreplaceable downtown buildings like the Withers Library, the Irving Theater, Trinity High School, and the nineteenth-century Trinity Grade School, and Holy Trinity Convent, now a parking lot?
Thank you.
Just one more paragraph, the Diocese of Peoria has stated
Thank you, thank you.
on the record that the parish is committed to preserving Holy Trinity and Rectory and working with the city, and I hope we can work together in the future to make sure that this is the case. I ask for your votes in supporting this resolution, thank you.
Okay, is that everybody?
That is everyone. And prior to starting the consent agenda, if you would allow me a moment to talk about an error in the minutes that were presented on the agenda, when you're ready.
I am ready.
Okay, all right. So, on the agenda, it appears as item 7A of the consent agenda. Councilmember Bolan, to my knowledge this morning, that on page four of the minutes, or page seven of the packet, there was item 8A discussed. It was regarding the downtown architecture item, and she actually voted against that item, and I have it incorrectly listed in the minutes. So I would just ask that when you consider the consent agenda, you do it as amended, and I will edit that vote to rightfully mark how the vote went down, okay? Thank you.
Okay, so with that, I think we're ready for a motion for the consent agenda as amended.
I'll move that we approve the consent agenda as amended.
Okay. Okay, Councilmember Krempler, and then Councilmember Hendricks.
We'll vote electronically.
Okay, so we're going electronically except for Councilmember Bolan?
That's correct, you got it.
I vote yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So consent agenda passes as amended, no needs to announce. And now we're gonna move to item 8A, consideration and action recommendation by the Planning Commission to designate the structures of Holy Trinity Church and the Holy Trinity Rectory located at 704 North Main Street as local historic landmarks, and to have the S4 Historic Preservation District overlay zoning designation applied to the subject property, including either adoption of an ordinance, approving the designation or adoption of resolution, rejecting the designation as requested by the Historic Preservation Commission. So now I'm gonna turn it over to City Manager Jerkins for some introductory remarks.
Thank you, mayor and council, and I will be very brief this evening. This is a continuation from the last time this matter was discussed. We have two sample motions for the council. One is to approve the ordinance designating the local landmarks. Because a protest has been filed, that does require an affirmative vote of two-thirds of the aldermen. So six votes is necessary to pass that ordinance. There's also a sample motion to deny the local historic status. If the motion to deny is made, either first or later in the evening, the council should summarize their comments or provide their feedback as to why they are in support of denial, so that that can be included in the record as well. And with that, I'll turn it over. If there are questions of the staff, we can address those, but otherwise, we'll turn it back to the council.
And again, Chris, let me make sure, so we're not, I mean, we already have the evidence from the Planning Commission, right? So we're not, we have to be careful not to...
Correct, we are not conducting a separate public hearing. So while there was public comment this evening, it should be considered only as individual opinion and not as evidence in the matter, and your vote should be based on the documentation and the issues presented to you from the Planning Commission.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion or discussion?
I will make a motion to deny.
Okay, make a motion to deny. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a second by councilmember Becker.
And to clarify for the record, that's a motion to approve a resolution denying the local historic landmark status and zoning map to add the S four. Thank you.
Yes.
I don't know if this is explanation or question for Chris, but if this, if we get, there's eight of us here tonight. So if five of us vote yes, it's rejected. But if this doesn't pass, it doesn't mean that it's accepted. It just means that we didn't formally reject it, correct?
That that is correct. The so to add some clarification, the city code requires that we approve by ordinance or deny by resolution. It doesn't set out the order in which the vote must occur. City code also establishes, as City Manager Jergens pointed out, that in order to approve a zoning map change, you must have two thirds of the sitting aldermen, so all nine. So you have to have six yes votes in favor of the ordinance to pass.
So if this resolution doesn't pass, do we have to go to the ordinance?
So the city code says that, I don't want to, I'm going to stick to the city code, okay? City code says you have to pass an ordinance or a resolution. So if the resolution doesn't pass, then I assume that someone will make a motion for the ordinance. If the ordinance doesn't get six votes, it doesn't pass. That doesn't mean that you can't bring back the resolution at that point. Have someone bring it back or reconsideration for someone who voted on the winning side of that can bring it back.
Add it later, add another meeting.
You can do it today. It's reconsideration at the same meeting. Otherwise, when we leave, if we don't have an ordinance, so we don't have a resolution, we haven't complied with the code.
Okay. Okay. Do we need explanation from anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry if I can enter, add one more thing. Both require a reason. So if we have a resolution denying, there should be a reason stated that goes into the resolution. As you'll recall in the model resolution that we provided to you, we put in there that as described on the record and that the clerk would prepare a summary of the reasons stated that would be attached to the resolution after when it comes to you for your signature. Same thing for the approval. It can be as simple as for the reasons recommended by the Planning Commission or something like that. But there there should be at least a statement of the reason for either accepting or denying.
Okay. Do you have a reason?
Sure, I don't think we should force it on the property owner. We'll just keep it simple. And I all, I can, I'm trying to be careful to not go against it. But my personal thing is, in addition to not forcing it, I'm a fan of Holy Trinity. I go there all the time. I don't believe this is good for it, and I don't believe that most of the people that I've talked to believe it's good for it.
Okay. So we we do have a reason?
Can I ask a clarifying question? If if I were to decide to vote against the ordinance or the resolution that's on the table, I need to give a reason for that.
I think the reason is only for the motion, right?
Yeah.
Can I give the, I mean, I made the motion, can I make a comment?
Sure.
Or a few comments? Well, first of all, at the, the testimony that was given by a member of the Historic Preservation at the Planning Commission said that they could qualify for a state tax credit, and that only applies to properties that generate tax, and the church does not generate tax. And the second thing is that there have been several different dollar amounts that could be used for that the church could use, the local tax dollars. So I'm kind of confused about that. And the very last thing is that in this country, we have property rights. And I do think it's, I do think that property rights trump anything else.
Thank you. I'll see any other lights for comments. I think we should vote electronically.
And councilmember Bowlin, how did you vote?
I I voted deny.
So to approve, okay.
Okay. So the resolution does not pass.
Correct. We'll have councilmember Kearns, councilmember Danenberger, councilmember Ward, councilmember Hendricks, and councilmember Crumpler voting no.
And so we have to do one or the other. So now we have to go to a motion to approve the ordinance, correct?
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance designating local landmarks and approving a zoning map amendment to add the S four overlay for the property at seven oh four North Main.
Okay, motion by councilmember Hendricks.
Second.
Okay, second by councilmember Danenberger. Do you have comments?
I just wanted to make a comment if I could. First of all, I I just want to thank everyone who came to speak this evening and the prior time on this. This is an incredibly difficult issue for us to consider. We've been provided a lot of information and while while this is an incredibly good intention and this is certainly a very important property in our community, it seems in reading everything that's been providing to us that this could in fact make the situation worse by imposing the restrictions and the cost of those repairs that have been provided have been very concerning to me. But I just wanted to again express, you know, my my respect for all the opinions on both sides that have been presented.
I would like to make another comment. This particular property is already registered as a national historic property. And for that reason also, I'm not sure that the local, the local is necessary.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Crumpler?
Thank you, Mayor. It's it seems that it's really significant to me that the the initiative, you know, to rezone this property was brought forth by the parishioners. I think that's a huge important fact in this issue. And I do not see how this S four zoning change would harm the interest of the diocese. I think we need to take a long term look and think about the value of the architecture and the beauty of this building as we make our decision. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other lights or other comments. Could we vote?
Councilmember Bowlin, how would you like to vote?
No.
Okay, so it's five yeas and two, three nays, so it doesn't pass, we're in eight six.
That that is correct. And if I could read the nays, it was councilmember Bowlin, councilmember Becker, and councilmember Montney.
Okay. All right. Thank you, everyone. We're going to move on to CD manager's discussion.
And just before we do, I I assume nobody, does anybody want to make a motion to reconsider the resolution? Or we just move on? It would have to be somebody that voted against the resolution. All right, we'll move on.
That's what I'd assumed.
Yes, all right, thanks, Mayor. If you could, Phil, if you could pull up my presentation. A few different things I wanted to talk about tonight. If you go to the first slide, the first is the homeless encampment. And we are in the process, the the property owner and Home Sweet Home Ministry, they are in the process of disbanding it. There was a large number on the parking lot. I was out there this afternoon, and it had dwindled significantly. I believe there were maybe around fifteen people or so left. Different service agencies are working with the individuals, trying to get them relocated, trying to figure out where they want to go. A lot of moving parts to this. Got news this afternoon, a couple of them got into some apartments to some permanent supportive housing. That's the best case scenario. We were very, very excited to hear that. And Joan Hartman with the Center for Human Services has been working hard to make that happen. They actually, I talked to Joan this afternoon as well. She told me they actually just filled a position where that's that person's basically full time job is to help get people into that housing. So even more resources and more time and energy is going to that. Right now, everything is online to to wrap that up tomorrow. They have a lot of volunteers that are prepared to be on site. Realize there, the Salvation Army is is not quite there yet, but they're getting there. Unfortunately, the the sad reality of it is we're not moving or or the property owner is not moving these people from proper shelter to improper shelter. Those that don't have anywhere to go right now, they're going from living in a in a tent on an asphalt parking lot to living in a tent somewhere else within the community. That's the hard reality of it, and that's why we have to stay focused on this problem and this issue. I spoke this afternoon also with town manager Pam Race and with the county administrator Cassie Taylor. We are getting together, planning a meeting for next week where we're going to bring the service providers together again, the units of government and and those involved with this. Continue to make sure that we are making progress on this and that we are doing everything that can be done to get the proper shelter that we need here in the community. So a lot of moving parts on this. We are working diligently on it, and we'll continue to keep the community updated on it. Next slide. A little bit lighter of a topic, happy to 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 talk about this. I've talked about it at a couple of different events in the in the community. We've started a Market Street beautification project. And this has come from a couple of different business owners in the community that have had an interest in trying to take some steps to beautify the Market Street entrance. And so this is a slide showing some of the business partners already that are involved with this. And I think this will grow dramatically. This is not something that we're asking the council or the taxpayers to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on a consultant or a study or do millions of dollars of improvements. This is more of an organic way to come together and see what we can do when we roll up our sleeves and try and beautify the entrance, this very used, highly used entrance to our community. Already had great communications with the state. We have a lot of exciting things that I think we're going to be able to see happen. Planting trees, removing fences, cutting down some overgrown shrubs and things like that. So we are really excited about this, and this is something I'll continue to provide some updates on as we get further down the road on this. Next slide. Also wanted to talk a little bit about the purchase of the, from the purchase of the Country Financial Complex from ISU that was announced last week. They are going to be making that the new home of their College of Engineering. Extremely excited about this. I had the honor of being the one of the first to congratulate and welcome President Tarhuli to the city of Bloomington. This will be their first large footprint within the city, and we're very excited about this. If you go to the next slide, Phil, this shows, and it's a little hard to see, but the the area with the red X on it, that's the building, the one half of the complex that ISU will occupy and close on first, potentially close as early as next month. The other side with the blue X, Country still occupies that building, and ISU will be closing on that before the end of twenty twenty six at this point. Eventually, then ISU will control that entire complex. The other exciting thing about this is the twenty six acres that is adjacent to this property right off of GE Road that is primed for some sort of development. And then there's the GE plant right next to that, which again, we think is going to be primed for development. This, the move and the creation of this College of Engineering to this location, we think is going to breathe new life into this area, and we're just very excited about it. Next slide, Phil. My computer is giving me problems, so. All right, so the next slide is the Bloomington Bison. They have their home opener this Saturday at seven PM. They, we, we want to try and get a sellout crowd for this or as near to a sellout crowd as possible. I had the honor of going to the preseason game on last Saturday. I know some of you went as well, a very exciting game. There were a couple of fights. It was pretty tense a couple of times, but it was a great game, actually a very close game. They were actually tied for a lot of the game. Then the Indy Fuel went up by one and and the Bison tried a couple of different techniques at the last few last seconds, and and they were able to get, they were scored on, and so they lost two to, or four to two. But it was a great game, really encouraged the community to come out to this. The first night on Saturday, they're going to have three dollar draft beer, soda, and hot dogs. I think there might even be free popcorn and then nine dollar specialty T shirts. And then they also have a home game on Sunday. It'll be their second home game. It's more focused on the kids, so it's free hot dogs, chips, and a soda. And then I think the kids get to go out on the ice after the game as well. So very excited to have the Bloomington Bison. It's, it's only been a few months since this was first approved. So if you can imagine how hard it's been to get a team built up and an organization. I think they have twenty full time employees here in Bloomington, so it's, it's been a great addition to the city. The other thing I would say is they still have players. I think they told me they have seven players still coming from New York that haven't even played on the team yet and other players coming from the Carolina Hurricanes. So really some great hockey that's going to be here in the community, and I encourage everybody to come out and check it out. Next slide. And then finally, tonight, I wanted to take a moment and remember George Dry, who passed away on Friday. George worked for the city, with the city for twenty six years before retiring in two thousand and four. He served as our city engineer until nineteen ninety one and then was the director of engineering and water before he retired. He started his career before PCs were used. And when he left, he had helped usher in the computer aid drafting and and all kinds of things. Again, when he started, they were doing maps with ink on the wall and actually had draftsman doing the maps. And when he left, they had just ushered in the first digital aerial photographs. He helped bring GIS to the entire community. He was a mentor to many within our city, including Kevin Cothe, our current city engineer. Always heard very, very positive, nice things about him. I never had the chance to meet him personally, but his death certainly impacted our staff. And we want to remember him fondly, and his hearts and prayers are with his family. And that's all I have tonight.
Okay, well, thank you, Jeff, and again, our condolences to Georgia's family. I I've seen a number of Facebook posts by former city employees talking about that. Also want to say thank you for all your efforts in terms of the homelessness situation. And again, we will not stop until we, you know, we have some pretty significant you know, resolution to this issue, particularly in terms of expanding shelter space, which I think is a great need in the community. The the other thing too, I was there at the College of Engineering, you know, unveiling at least that location with Country. Definitely a great event, a great opportunity to to work, you know, with ISU on this. And I think the really the the upside for me is for one, to have such a significant footprint for Illinois State University in the city of Bloomington. And as people continue to to look up Bloomington for a number of reasons, you know, they will see Ferrero, they will see the College of Engineering and and many other great companies like Country and and also State Farm. So certainly, you know, you know, gives us a lot more exposure. And two, I think it's, it's, it is a visionary thing for ISU to do something like this, to have a College of Engineering, because as you can think, I can think of how many people you know, who come from colleges of engineering that have created pretty significant companies and, and you know, had a lot of inventions and things like that. I know we do have, you know, the CEO of Riden, who was also an engineer and chose to settle here. So I'm really looking forward to in the future the opportunity to have a College of Engineer graduates create something big that, you know, will be part of Bloomington. So. Yes, and I'm looking forward to the home opener for the Bison. I, I hear I'm throwing out the first buck, right? Okay, and then also something for charity as well? The opportunity to win fifty thousand dollars, correct?
For charity, not for yourself.
Okay, so I'm going to start practicing between now and Saturday because I really want to make this. So really looking forward to it. Are there any other comments from council members? Okay, council member Kearns?
Quickly, I just wanted to wish everyone a happy, happy Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Awesome. Oh, council member Bowlin?
No, I don't have any extra comments. Thank you.
Okay, all right, awesome. So with that, is there a motion to adjourn? Council member Hendricks? Second, council member Ward. All those in favor sending a five by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned. We'll see you next Monday.